Diane's the only one? Oh, okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Diane, you're the only one that's joining us via Zoom. So Charlene is here, and Chan is here, and we have Amy Monahan is here, and Crystal Adams is here, and we have a special guest tonight because it's our second meeting of the month. But for the update on ARPA, we have Karen Fitzgerald here. Fitzpatrick?
How long have you been working with me?
Okay.
Give me the nice.
Let's. Okay, first of all, calling us to order. I would like to make a motion that we add two agenda items. I have a memorandum from NICOG that I'd like to discuss. And also, I would like to consider the appointment of somebody to the Crystal Pond Park Commission. So making that motion, do we have a second?
Sure.
Second?
Yep.
All in agree? Okay, so we're gonna add that. Next, actually, you know what? Why don't we just jump right into that? The NICOG thing came in yesterday. Basically, what it is, is I'm gonna ask this board to appoint me to represent the town in signing contracts on behalf of the town. This is something we've done in the past. This is for the eastern third of Connecticut. And this deals with Homeland Security Grant Program. And it's federal money that's coming into the state and will be shared with local communities. It deals with issues around custodial ownership of equipment, memos of agreement, planning and resource coordination, and federal money if it's used for equipment and comes into our possession. So it's a long packet, as Diane, as you can see. But basically, I'm just asking the board to, for their permission, to act on behalf of the town in signing contracts related to this, and we've done it in the past. So could I hear a motion, please?
I'll make a motion and would like to ask a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Is this strictly through NICOG?
No, NICOG is, the COGS. We have six COGS in the state, but the COGS are coordinating this for the various towns. So we are acting in conjunction with NICOG, but CCOG, which is southeast. So it's the eastern third of the state. And they're just, they're just coordinating the whole thing. But it's basically, it's gonna, once this is signed, it goes back to the deputy commissioner of. Don't tell me, don't tell me. I think it's Public Protection, which is down based in Middletown.
In other words, this is all through any council of governments? You're asking for permission to sign any programs through that?
Through that for this, which is for FEMA and emergency management. Yeah. So are we all in agreement?
I second you.
All right, thank you. And I'm gonna get this certified on Monday. It has to be certified, this vote, and Judy will have to certify it, and that's part of the packet that goes in. Okay. The second thing I have is an application to Board and Commission. It just arrived. I had received an email from the Chair of the Crystal Pond Park Commission. Anyway, it's Molly Thaneel. She's Director of Alumni at Nichols College, lives in Woodstock. She's lived here for 30 years. She's unaffiliated as far as party. She finds that this group, it's an opportunity to serve the community needs and benefits as a volunteer. She previously served on the REC Commission. She's known about the town park as a camping location for years, most recently through events at the lodge and rentals. So she's interested in supporting this program for the both towns. Her attitude is do what I can to make the job easier for the folks that might make my community better. She's been going to the meetings already. That's about it. So what are your pleasure?
I move that we appoint Molly to help to the Crystal Pond Park Commission.
Okay, thank you. Second and unanimous. Okay, next, I would like to ask you to approve the minutes of our November 18th regular Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 18th, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting as presented?
Okay, second? Second, unanimous. Now, the next is to approve the 2022 calendar year Board of Selectmen meeting schedule. This was tabled at our last meeting in the packets that you have in your folders. I had asked Kiana to go back to the last six months. So you've got the last six months of meetings, Monday through Thursday. And there's also been some Saturday activities. And you also see the last page, or next to the last page, has the Board of Education meets on Thursdays. Some of their subcommittees are Mondays, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, Wednesday, and Monday and Thursday. Excuse me. We also went back and we checked prior, back to 2008. And the meetings have always been on Thursdays. So again, I'd like you to look at the last page in your packet, which was the, and I believe it's highlighted, what the dates would be for the next year. And ask if you would accept that. So your motion?
I so moved, but I have a question.
Yes.
Um, it has brought my attention by the Chairman of Proning and zoning.
Yep.
That he and his commission members can not, most of his commission members cannot attend four o'clock Board of Selectmen's meetings. And he wondered if we were considering making a time change on that.
No. My, my, may I?
Please.
Thank you. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Hey, you stop laughing, this is being recorded. The issue is this, and I've said this with other organizations I've been involved in. If it's important enough to you, you will take time off or make the time. And I've been involved with organizations with people that couldn't make the evening meetings because I work second shift. My attitude is if joining this organization is important enough to you, take a day off. So the thing is, I'm sorry, it's inconvenient for people. No, no, this, no, I understand, but this is my personal feeling. And there's no statute, there's no ordinance. It's just that no matter what you do, there's always someone, so.
One of the things that I would have liked to put out there, of course, I shouldn't send it by email, I know better now.
It's okay.
Is since our meetings usually run 30 minutes to an hour tops. And so PNC is starting at 7:30. What if we started ours at 6:30, just to get clear of PNC and then give Amy time to get downstairs and get set up for that next meeting?
What would be the advantage?
Just that we wouldn't be overlapping with that commission at all, so that.
But we're, we're taking care of the same group of people. By going to four o'clock, we've opened ourselves up to a different group of people. By going 6:30 and then 7:30, it really doesn't open our meetings up to anybody else.
No, I was just saying, I originally just brought this up for consideration about that, the day, because the one committee that we overlap with is PNC. And.
So if we start at 6:30, we might be done before 7:30, so we could, so those people could join this meeting, and then people from here could go and join their meeting if they.
With the exception.
She's raising her hand.
PNC members voted not to change their time to an earlier time because they couldn't get there earlier. So they don't want to be in the building or meetings before seven.
But.
That was at the last meeting.
Their meeting or coming to other meetings?
Well, if they can't go to their meeting because of obligations, they wouldn't be able to go to.
I don't know what their obligations, I'm just saying if they want to attend.
I just throw it out there as a consideration. And, and we've been doing it this way these times, this day. We've looked at it, we've considered it.
No, and I'm glad you brought it up. These are the kind of things we're supposed to talk about.
What about if your first Thursday is the late one and your second Thursday is the early one? I don't know if PNC, no, it's the same?
I, I.
I got. Turned up against it.
Okay, I got.
The issue with PNC, because they, there was talk about going to 6:30.
And they all voted against it.
Right. Now, the other issue, I'm wondering if they would consider going to another day other than Thursday. I'm being facetious, but you catch my drift. I'm serious. If they are that concerned of conflicts and they want to make both, why don't they meet on Tuesdays?
In.
And again, I'm not serious, guys, you know that.
I've been on this board for over 14 years. The only time, with the exception of Jeff Gordon, that anybody from that commission's come to our meetings is because they got to their meeting a little too early and they'd step in for a few minutes. There's just never been that much interest, no one's ever.
Since saying fourth thing is we've considered it?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, and you made the motion?
Yes, I made the motion that.
Second.
Okay, I, unanimous. Okay, now, the reason we're here at seven o'clock when being taped, oh, yes. Karen Fitzpatrick is gonna give us an update on the American Rescue Plan. Ms. Karen?
Okay. Um, okay, so I have several things I'd like to share this evening. The first thing I would like to share is since our last meeting, we've received a few more suggestions on the ARPA 2021. Website. Sorry, sorry, Diane, we had a technical difficulty.
Put it on.
Walk away. Okay, getting back to community input, since our last meeting, we've had a few more suggestions. And the, the last few were install sidewalks that connect to all schools and playing fields with extensions to Extramar and Suite of Alinas. Allocate funds to help eligible businesses. And one particular individual asked to have the entire 2.3 million dedicated to the maintenance of Rosen Park. But since we already had Rosen Park on this list, I actually put the other comment was no funds should be used to any town maintenance. And last but not least, we do have a concerned resident regarding not having any center lane dividers on some of our dark roads, mainly Rosen Park and English Neighborhood. She asked if we could consider putting some median line markers with reflectors. That was her suggestion. I did go one step forward and talked to John Navarro and asked him how come the town of Woodstock doesn't put road lanes dividers in? And he basically said there was several reasons. One, it's extremely expensive. Number two, it's because they don't really last more than a year, so there's constant maintenance. And then number three, a lot of those roads get chip sealed, which is stone and oil. And therefore, we would have to redo those. So they've considered it in the past, but they haven't been doing it. It's a very costly maintenance for the town.
Just a little aside on that?
Yep.
It has been done in the past one time that I recall, and all it did was speed up the traffic on the road.
Okay, so if anybody heard that Chandler Parkhead, our selectman, had mentioned that there was a time when we did do it on one of the roads and it caused more, more speeding than it did, than it did good. So those were some of the updated suggestions. I did want to just quickly read a couple of requests that also came in besides suggestions. One of them was from the ARC, Eastern Connecticut ARC. They're asking to commit $2,000 to their nonprofit organization, which would help build the platform that supports their services for the next few years. We also did receive a request for $10,000 a year from Teague. What they're hoping is that they could use those funds to hire additional part-time staff to be able to meet the demand of a lot of the services they provide, which has risen during the pandemic. We also have received a $3,000 request from Thames Valley Community Action Council. That is Meals on Wheels. We do currently, I just wanted to make it aware that we do currently support both Teague and TVCCA in our regular fiscal year budget. Those increases have been coming in, which is rising costs on our budgets as well. And the other one that we actually received was a $10,000 request from the Wyndham County 4-H Camp asking all surrounding towns, we have children go to these camps to, to put $10,000 towards the DM project. I guess they have a DM for their pond that needs to be fixed. So I just wanted to mention that those were actually requests, not just suggestions. Okay, and as far as basically the December 16th overview update, there really wasn't too much to update, with the exception of on page two. If you go down to Woodstock's plan, you know, bullet number, three, one, two, three, four, bullet five, where it says First Selectman Jay Swan has issued a notice asking for the community to submit their suggestions by December 31st. And that we are here tonight to propose Phase One of the obligations of funding through the American Rescue Plan. These are all based on public safety. We were trying to emphasize Phase One on public safety. And the reason we are considering doing this in phases is because that's how the funding is coming in. We do not have all the funding that is supposed to be earmarked for Woodstock. So we don't want to commit or obligate any funds that we don't currently have on hand. So what we are planning to do is there is a proposal that I just briefly, we will make it a little bit more professional when we come to vote on this, hopefully in January. But I did put together, Jay and I sat down for extensive hours with our Board of Finance Chairman Mike Doherty to get some input. We had some questions on some of the submissions that came in. And these are the items that we've come up with. And I'd also like to state that these projects will be funded with the American Rescue Plan funds, but we're going to be using those from the reduction of revenue, which means it gives us more of a broader use to provide government services. And as long as we don't go over the current revenue loss of 1.75 million, there'll be another measurement after December 31st, which hopefully will give the town more revenue loss that we can use in a little bit more of a broader spectrum. So the first proposal is updating emergency communications. Basically, our emergency management director, Dave Elliott, proposed upgrading radio communication with the Muddy Brook Fire Department, Bungie Fire Brigade, Woodstock Volunteers, the Town Hall and the Highway. I believe these radios are gonna be on the same state system, which is, I believe, 800 megahertz. We're gonna be providing five base stations. And I actually just got the updated proposal before this meeting. So there's actually a proposal for 122 portable radios. We also have 71 mobile radios and five base stations. This quote includes all materials, labor installation, and programming. So altogether, the quote dated today is $492. We budgeted $500,000 because we didn't have this in hand. We were going past some older quotes, and those had expired, and the prices were increasing. So we were considering this as if we don't get it done now, the prices are just gonna keep going up. The second purchase we'd like to propose for Bungie Fire Brigade is the purchase of 12 Scott self-contained breathing apparatus devices. I believe that Muddy, I believe, I'm sorry, that Bungie had purchased other brands in the past that were not compatible with the Woodstock Fire Volunteers in Muddy Brook. So this will bring them up to, up to date with the other two fire departments. And that is approximately 105,000. Dave Elliott is getting an updated quote on that as well, because the quote we received was from August. The next, I like just, I actually forgot to take off the word emergency, I'm sorry.
Number three.
Number three, tree, emergency tree removal. I know that people don't like the word emergency. I apologize. It should just say tree removal. I will correct that. But John Navarro keeps coming back year after year, going to the Board of Finance, asking for additional fundings. We have several hundreds of thousands of trees here in Woodstock that have the ash borer bugs.
Emerald Ash Borer, which is a, yeah, it's come in and it's creating a problem. But we also have trees.
That have just rotted and dead and.
We also have, Eversource has come in with private companies. And what they're doing is usually trees that are on the same side of the road as the power lines. And I met with somebody from Eversource, John and I were with her last week. And I said, one of my issues, that's great that you have Asplund coming in and doing this. What about the trees across the street that are gonna damage your lines if they come down? So she listened to us, how that'll change, I don't know, but it is an issue.
It is an issue and.
A lot of these are still standing dead trees from.
Yeah, we just can't keep up with it. You know, that's the problem. We just can't keep up with it. And the last thing we want is a tree falling on somebody who's walking on our roads or if there's a storm and it falls down on a car, causes, you know, major issues for the town. So we have put aside 120,000 for that. The next thing that we need to do here is the upgrade of the Town Hall HVAC system. So originally, I believe, there's 19 or 20 systems up. 19, okay, and 13 of them need to be upgraded. Some of them go as far back as when the building was built in 89. These cannot be purchased. These are custom-built heat source pumps. And we had been advised it would be cheaper to update what we have than to try to put in a whole new system. It would just cost, you know, a lot more money.
Do we have any kind of clarification as far as part availability and?
So basically.
Right now, if anything.
Well, they're all gonna be, they're all gonna be having to be custom-built. So if you remember, when mine went in the treasurer's office, that also affects the ladies' room. And when ours died, it took six to eight weeks, and it was in the midst of winter. We had no heat. Diane and I used portable heaters. But no, they're all custom-built. They, there's not, so if one dies, we have to order one to be custom-built. That's why we're trying to get them.
Replacing the system?
$92,000.
No, let's do the custom build.
Oh, oh, Crystal.
300,000 to do a whole new system.
It's almost like cost prohibitive.
Yeah.
And the funny thing is, the tax collector's office, I was there when he was up crawling around, and he was reading the code number, and they figured, oh, this is original. It was, it was the original, so it's 30 years old. And a problem is parts. Yeah, every time there's a problem, as happened with, how long did it take to get yours replaced?
It took them like six to eight, it was like eight weeks altogether by the time it was fully installed, because they're all custom.
They had, they had to build it. No, they called, oh, we need this.
Right, but are we gonna put ourselves in the same situation?
It's gonna, well.
If we wait longer, we may, on some of the units, some of the units are not as old, they're not 30 years old. Some of them might be, you know, 15, they've been replaced going far back, as I think 2008, 2012. Mine was 2018. So I think that if we start replacing some of the oldest models first, we hopefully won't have that problem of having it shut down when there's no heat.
But your point is well taken.
Right.
They kind of got us in a sense that we have this design that we're stuck with, but the problem is it's cost prohibitive to go to another company and say, can you put a new system in? Because it's, they're starting from scratch.
Right.
Okay, I just, maybe one suggestion would be, you're talking about 13 custom-built. Eventually, we're gonna need a 14th or a 15th. I just wonder if, because they're custom-built, if they're making 13, what would be the cost to have two more built and have them sitting on a shelf somewhere?
We can ask that.
Waiting until the six-week issue that we've had.
I mean, we, we can ask that if.
Or even have them.
If they will store them there.
Downstairs.
Just have them. At least that way, if something does go, it could be a week to get it back up and running as opposed to, and they don't have to reinvent the wheel, it's already built.
Yeah.
Matches everything else.
You're looking at that?
What's the life expectancy of these systems?
I don't know. Horsecraft thought it was three years, and yet.
Mine was the original, and it crapped out. It lasted like 26 years. Linda's has lasted 30.
What I was going with, in the same direction as Chan, except to say, how much would it be for us to just replace 19 systems now or get the parts now? If we could look down the road and potentially see six of them go, not just one or two.
They didn't, they didn't break this down, it just said total package for all. I can, so let me.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the other thing I want to explain is, for instance, Judy's office, there's like three units up there, and hers were recently replaced a few years ago. And depending on the size, they're not all the same price. I've noticed that, like ours was like less than 5,000, but for Judy's office, it was over 8,000. So I think it depends on, her room is a lot bigger than ours. So, you know, it's kind of hard to, I, I mean, personally, I think that we go with this and then with hopes that we replace the oldest units. And then some of the other units are only a few years old. We should get at least, I would say, 15 plus years, I, I would hope.
Right, just, it's worth having the conversation with the contractor.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can have Crystal.
Replace the unit, which is gonna be a different size from the ones that we have been replacing. You know, there's not much bearing. So if we have two extras on the shelf, it may not be the size we need.
Yeah, I have it all right here too, Crystal. Here's the list, like, so some of them were replaced in 2016. So we're not gonna replace like the town clerk's office, tax office, hers, hers lasted, it's still in there.
It's still there.
It's still there. Treasurer's office, is it even on there? Because I had them take it off, because they had mine on there. Yeah, and I told Crystal to have them take it off, because it was 2018, I went back and looked. So a lot of them, like the basement, 1989, registrar's office, I don't even think we know some of them.
Yeah, first of those downstairs aren't used on regular big as much as the ones up here do, but still.
So, I mean, it seems like the ones that went have been replaced within like the last five years or so. You know?
We should, going back to Charlene's point, we should look into the sizes or the model numbers, because we don't want to have two size As and we have one size B that craps out.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it looks like Emily's, she's got two in that office over there. Conference room, training and zoning office. So what do you specifically want us to ask them, just so I'm clear and Crystal's clear?
Well, this is their proposal, and they feel that we only need 13 units.
You want us to ask them what their life expectancy?
If there's 13 units, but there's four of these and two of those, and then my point might not make sense.
Right.
What if, like the 14th and 15th oldest units?
Yep.
If they're common to what they're making, does it make sense?
Extra and I put some money, okay, we can, like.
Only to speed up the process.
Yeah, I mean, this, like, like I said.
You know it'll happen in the dead winter.
This is why we, well, that's what happened to my office, and Diane and I froze. We had little teeny tiny heaters, we'd go in there with frozen fingers.
Maybe ask Swan with the, the model numbers that last the least amount of time, you know what I mean? What's more likely to go next, if they can figure that out? I don't know what they've replaced, and I'm hearing there's different sizes or different models.
The other, the other thing that I want to just say, things were built better 30 years ago, let's face it. They're not built that way today. It's like you could buy a refrigerator 30 years ago, and it lasts 20. things were built better thirty years ago, let's face it. They're not built that way today. It's like you could buy a refrigerator thirty years ago and it lasts twenty-plus years. You buy a refrigerator today, you're lucky it lasts five years because of the way that they're made. I'm serious, you know, I, I, when I first moved to Woodstock in two thousand and two, there was a refrigerator in my basement that was from the nineteen fifties that was still cold. It was one of those all one white units that you had held like this and had a little tiny freezer. Of course, we didn't appreciate it and didn't want it, so we gave it away. And I think.
They're still using.
I think so. I think they, my friends of ours, well, probably not now, it's been twenty years, but I would say for a good five or so years after that, they had it in their garage and they kept using it. Things are just not made like that anymore.
But it's also, we don't repair things anymore.
We just throw them away and replace them.
And you can't get the parts that you need, especially for the brands that are made out of country.
Oh, Crystal, you have, see, I don't have all that with me tonight, all the extra schematics. If you want to print that and give it, give a copy to Chan, who knows a little bit more, be, you can review it.
It's more a question.
Yeah.
For the contractor.
All right. Well, just sometimes, some people have some knowledge and if they read through it, but no, we'll definitely follow up with them and ask if at this time they feel we should replace more and we could put more money in.
I, I don't.
And we'll have that by the six, we'll have it before the six.
I don't want to just barely fix things.
Right. After, okay. All right, perfect. So next, okay, so here's another one I'm gonna. So John is going to be doing a complete reconstruction of Lebanon Hill Road. And it is going to cost more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but he does also have more money in CNR that's already been approved for him to start the project. And that, he thinks that this could be the balance. And so what we would like to do is be able to do the cold-in-place, which is a recycle train. And then after that, he'll do an overlay of hot asphalt. He said there might be some drainage and stuff like that, but he said the road is in a state of disrepair. So that's one of the construction prob, and what we would like to do is maybe help offset our budget up this upcoming year because we know funding is going to be tight. So we'll be able to pay for this project instead of out of his roads budget, we'll be able to pay for it out of ARPA funds with hopes that we can, you know, save some money in our budget because it's gonna be a tough year. Muddy Brook. They had sent in an actual request and proposal. I guess this heavy rescue truck is used by all the fire departments.
No, 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 it's not the truck. It's, it's the heavy rescue inflatable bags.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, you.
No, no, well, it's carried on the heavy rescue truck, but what it is, it, it's an inflatable bag that in case of an accident and, you know, a situation.
To that part yet. I was saying it's for that truck. It's the rescue truck that all the departments share.
It's shared by all three.
They're looking to replace their airbags and trucks. And that's forty-two thousand dollars. Also, we have to start paying some fees. One of them is we're in contract with NECOG for the consulting, advising and reporting of the ARPA funds. This twenty-five thousand is an estimate for four years, meaning this should get us through four years. Because I think the base is nineteen thousand and some change, and then they charge fifty-five dollars an hour. I can't see us spending more than maybe ten hours a year with them if they're just going to be mainly doing the reporting. Unless things change here and we start giving, you know, sending them more inquiries and stuff. We're still trying to tweak all that out. Excuse me. And then town administrative costs, that is funding for myself as finance director and the bookkeeper. Our office seems to be the one that is mainly consuming excessive amount of hours working on ARPA and doing all of the administration work, answering, replying to emails, typing up proposals. At some point, Diane, our bookkeeper, will be doing all the billing and the payments. And we have to keep track of the projects and have all the backup, so this will, this is not like you're going to just give us thirty thousand, this is as needed. So like if Diane has to work two hours one week because she has to do some extra payables, you know, for some projects with ARPA, and also those hours are, you know, social security and pension that would come from the MERS. I've run this by our auditor, he said it is acceptable. I've also read it in the plan, we just have to keep records of it. Kind of hard for me because I'm juggling, you know, so I, I am, I mean, I'm a salaried individual, I'm not hourly, so to try to sit down and figure it, I mean, I write down how many hours I put in a day, but I'm juggling many, many things at once, so we're going to try to figure out the best way for me to be able to record that. So as it stands right now, oh, and I just want to tell you that that thirty thousand, I based that from January of twenty twenty-two to June of twenty twenty-three, so it's eighteen months, so it gets us through the rest of this fiscal year and all of next fiscal year. And then we'll see how Phase Two goes when we. So it's not a lot, that split, but it does cover pensions, social security, Medicare and extra salary for extra hours. It's just, you know, it's, it's a large added project for my department. And we, mainly me, put in a lot of extra hours and time to, you know.
And I just want to point out for our sake that this does not include any of the time she's put in for the last six months, to start in January.
Yeah, I opted not to, I said.
No, but I appreciate that, and I think people should know.
And what is our, our total for the first?
So Phase One total is one thou, I'm sorry, one million forty-two thousand unless we decide to do more of the HVAC for the Town Hall. So to, to your question, I'm, think that I know where you're going with this. So.
No, no, you're overthinking. How much did we get in the first?
That's, that's, that's what I said, I think I know where you're going, I just need the, yeah, I just need to get back there to give you the right amount. It's like one point one six million, but I wanted to give you.
That's okay, that's enough for me.
Yep. But the revenue calculation for the loss is based on the two point three we're earmarked to get?
Yeah.
Which will, again, people don't, well, it's just Diane. People don't understand this, but this revenue stuff that we're getting back means it frees up some of this money that we can use in other priorities. And there are some towns that they've already started spending their ARPA funds. I know that for a fact. And we're just taking a very conservative approach.
Well, some of these items are just, they're just, we've been receiving extra quotes because they're telling us that if we don't purchase before the end of this year, by January, a lot of these prices are going up. Swan is honoring this price till what, December thirty-first? Yep, just like last Tuesday night when I talked to the Board of Finance about asking them to pay for the acoustics.
Yep.
I mean, if we don't do this by the end of this year, they're going up seven percent. So I mean, the longer we delay, I know this radio communications through EMS in the highway, this is a very large project and I believe it's going to take a good year before it's all said and done to, to get it all set up, installed. So the longer we wait, I mean, I've confirmed it with several people from Fire EMS and even with the Highway Foreman, John Navarro, if, you know, this is something we want to do, now's the time to start moving because it's just going to keep the cost, will keep going up.
Looking at the list, is there anything that we could possibly find another avenue to fund? Very difficult question, I.
Yep, and I have to be honest with you, I, I look at this stuff all the time. I know a lot of people actually are hoping that we could either put in a walking trail or upgrade the town fields that the, are back of the elementary and middle school. I also think Rosen Park is very important and many people have, you know, chimed in on that because during the pandemic, it was the saving grace for a lot of families. It's a historical gem we have here. It was, it was actually willed to the people of Woodstock. They do have a Board of Trustees, but they don't have the funding to be able to keep it maintained. And one of the big projects was repairing the roads. I know John Navarro said he had some ways to help save them some money, but if those roads are in better condition, you know, kids can ride their bikes, people can walk, wheelchairs, you know, anybody with a disability can pretty much utilize that park. It, I think it fits the needs of everybody and people. It gives them the opportunity to still communicate, get out of their house, get out of their yard, get fresh air, exercise, socialism, you know, I mean, socialization, sorry. I'm tired, I really am tired. But anyway.
Correction.
Yes.
You know, the, the, the thing that's incredible about that park is that Henry Bowen really loved this town because he provided, you know, through the endowment as well as the park. And when the Last Green Valley gave the park a grant for an historic landscape study some years ago. And they came up with some really great things from the archives up in Worcester. And it's just amazing, the Rosen Lake used to be a swamp. They hand drudged it with, with guys with shovels and teams of crews and all of this kind of stuff.
I lived on Rosen Lake on the opposite side for ten years, yep.
It, it's just amazing that the lake itself exists, never mind the park. And now, so, you know, important waters, supply of platinum and important part of the whole drainage system needs to import down.
So I mean, we can consider adding that to the proposal. I mean, I mean, if you all have the list in front of you, right?
They do.
So, can we just, if we could have a moment to just breeze through it and give me some ideas? You know?
Also, take it home.
Yeah, we're not, we're not voting tonight, but.
January sixth.
Yeah, we'd like to do it, and the reason why I'm saying we'd like to do it by Jan, the first meeting in January is because then it needs to go to the Board of Finance, but that way if we can't get it voted on in January sixth, we can do it at the second selectmen's meeting and still have it approved in time to go to the Board of Finance. I mean, I, I, I'm looking like, I, I do understand other.
No, I, I think you and I have some homework now to.
Yeah.
To work with Charlene.
Yeah.
And let's fine tune what we think and bring, bring it back to the table in January.
And I think also prioritize.
Yeah.
You know?
I can't use it for bridge improvements with this current bridge project because we're already going out for bond and it was an existing project, and once we bond, we can't use it to reimburse. You know, maybe that's something in Phase Two, if we don't get as much infrastructure money, maybe it's, you know, Phase Two, we can upgrade another bridge. I know we have several bridges that we're working on this for, but I think there's seven more that need to be addressed over the next several years. John would know more than that, but.
One thing I would say is want to wait, see what happens with constructor, with the other funds from Washington that would support those things, but might not support something to do with a trail or the park or whatever, because maybe we could do a little bit for a park or trail kind of endeavor and use the infrastructure money more for that.
Yeah, so one of those.
Stuff that's necessary.
Right.
We're really wondering what that's going to be all about. Everybody is.
I, I keep trying to look and I'm not getting as much info as I would hope to provide, so I haven't really talked about it yet. Have you, I don't know if other people have, it's, I have enough with this right now. I'm like, okay, I know OPM's going to be advising us and sending us, I'm still getting audited from the municipal coronavirus relief funds. So, yeah, it's a lot. All these grants are coming in at once, but if I could just, one more thing I'd like to just mention is we had talked about putting the wa, or finishing the walking trail all around the middle school area because there's already walking trails there and parking, and then this would be a safer area for everybody to walk, which would go completely around the school. A lot of residents said that they would like to see that where they can walk and feel safe. So, you know, these are some things if you want to do more for health and welfare too, which would be the next proposal, but, you know, maybe this spring we can start doing some of the things at Rosen Park that need to be addressed. People all over town are constantly fundraising for them, trying to, you know, donate, have auctions to, to provide, you know, revenue to keep that park going.
We have a challenge grant right now to someone who has stepped forward and said that they will put up one hundred and two thousand dollars if the park can match it, which is the effort that they're trying to go through. So maybe the town could contribute something toward that that would help get them to that goal because that is what about? Two hundred fifty thousand to do maybe it's.
So maybe we, maybe we contribute a hundred and fifty thousand and, and then they would get the other hundred thousand as a matched donation.
Or, or some, some portion there, you know, which might give more incentive for other people to give money to, you know, so.
If, if we kick some money in to get closer to the goal, I, I agree that it might, hey, we're getting close to this goal, let's, let's get it done.
Put us over the, over the top, and I've seen that with various fundraising.
Well, it seems doable then, you know, you realize that you, you could do it, it, it could work. When you, we see a couple of good gifts, good donations come in that way, so.
During the busy months, that park sees two hundred and fifty cars a day.
I can't believe it, easily.
That's so substantial.
It's a beautiful park and it's a lot of history, right, and it's, it's a huge historical important piece of property here in Woodstock. I mean, like I said, centuries and centuries and from the Bowen family and seems like it's always something's going on over there.
Well, that's because of Rick and Dee.
Yep, they really, really.
Turned the place.
Right.
Absolutely.
Yep.
It's my daughter's favorite park.
And they're not resting either. They've got, they've got a lot more on the burner, they want to keep going, so. Plus, the repaving project is a big safety issue. Because right now, when you come in, you come along the side of the barn and cut right in front of it. Well, if you've got an event in the barn and some little kid decides to go to the swings.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask this question, it might be a little bit more, I might be overthinking it, but, so, so one of the things that concerns me when it comes to giving funds is no matter whether we pay for it ourselves or whether we donate it or give it as a grant, the town's responsible. So we are responsible to make sure that the funds are being utilized as proposed. They, you know, we have to, we have to keep an eye on things and ma, and manage it. One of my concerns would be what if the Rick and Dee decide to retire and move along? And Roseland Trustees don't have the.
Easy way to do it.
Okay.
All you have to do is in, in providing the funding, you do it with a letter of agreement that they, Board of Trustees would have to sign, accepting the funds. And in that letter of agreement, state that the funds are for this purpose, that the, the, the expenditures need to be.
Based on this project.
Right, but I mean, they need to provide you with the information that says that.
Yeah.
Account for it, but also that this is, it, it goes to the Board of Trustees not to to Rick and Dee.
No, 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 I don't mean Rick and Dee, no, what I'm saying is, I guess what I'm.
Nonprofit and not a town.
Yeah, I think, I think what I'm afraid of is what if, you know, all of a sudden we, we give them the money to do this project and for some reason the Board of Trustees don't have money to continue the maintenance and they shut the park down and then it goes kaput. That's, I guess, my fear, you know, I just want to make sure, you know what I'm trying to say? Like, I just want to make sure
I, I understand.
That we're investing in something that is for the community because that's what these funds are for. But that it's going to be somewhat, you know, down the road, we don't have to worry about the park closes because it can't be maintained anymore.
Yeah. I, I, I think that you can have a phrase like that, the improvements, you agree to make these improvements and keep them in place for a particular period of time. Other than that, you really don't have a lot of control over it. But as long as, as the recipient is a legitimate nonprofit, can provide the five oh C three.
Yep.
Status. And agrees to show you their accounting for the project. And that's about all you can do.
Yeah, I have a sample, if you don't mind, maybe I could just send it to you, because I know you have a lot of expertise, but I have a sample that NECOG, NECOG is working on that hopefully will go on our website soon, once it's approved with their attorneys. It's a, it's a really in-depth application and asks, you know, are you a five oh three C? Once it's approved with their attorneys, it's a, it's a really in-depth application and asks, you know, are you a five oh three C? And all this stuff, so, you know, hopefully that will be something, you know, we can.
They're following the same guidelines that you'd have to follow if you were, like. Some of the funding that we gave as grants from the Last Green Valley.
Yeah.
Came from the federal government.
Yeah.
And so as, as a recipient of those funds, we then had to make sure that sub recipients were doing certain things.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's, once you get into a routine with it, it's pretty.
Yeah. No, okay, I'd just like to add to it, but I. I hundreds of years. So if you two wouldn't mind, over the next couple of weeks, I know the holidays and things are coming, but. And if it can't be done on the sixth, we'll have to postpone it to the next meeting, but anyway, if you could just. Take a look at, and if you want any backup, I can scan it and send it, you know, if you want the backup for the radio quotes and all that. It's just a lot of paperwork, but if you want it, I have it and.
I don't, I, I would say let's just take it up at the first meeting in January. We might not be voting on a final, but at least we can have another good discussion.
Okay, and.
Minuses.
Yeah.
Get some consensus going and if it does have to go to the next meeting.
I guess my feeling with both of you is if we, the three of us could agree on prioritizing.
Well, yeah, one thing I wanted to mention and Jay and I, we, we received it very late yesterday. And I didn't have time today to, to update the stuff, working on trying to get our, our audit financial statements finished. But anyway, we did get another quote, I gave you a copy this evening and I gave Charlene. It's from Dottie Dur, she kind of, so basically I reviewed it. And it seems to be a compilation of a lot of the suggestions that have already come through. With just a little bit more in depth, but, but one of her main thing was is she'd like to see the funding spent on engineering. To redo the South Common and make that a park with parking spaces. You know, that seemed to be one of her biggest things there. A lot of the things that she suggests. Or asks to continue are things that we're already doing with Rec Department and, you know, organizations like Woodstock Ag and different things like that. So realistically, when I, when I read through most of that. It, it seems like she's thinking that the money would be well spent doing more engineering like. Having somebody survey all the, the land in Woodstock to see if there would be a place to put a community center. Some of those items, the, the reason that I find those kind of a little bit more than we can handle per se. Is because if they're constructed, number one, we wouldn't have enough money to construct those. And number two, who would maintain them, you know? And it's a very, I mean, even just a park alone, you're talking maintenance on the, you know, sidewalks and maintenance on the parking areas. With snow, ice removals, you know, it, it's, that's a lot of extra added responsibility for the town and for the highway department. And I don't see where we're going to be able to find the need for a community or, or the funds.
Sustainability from day one.
Right.
And one thing that I wrote down this evening was, Teague wanted to hire some more staff.
They already gave us a proposal for that.
But the bottom line, when the money's done, how do you pay for the staff?
Correct, and they, they said only for a couple of years, but the other thing that I found was odd that. One of the other towns where they're located that they provide a lot of service for, we heard wasn't going to contribute.
Out of Barbara.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't want to be, you know, like, there's a, there's a lot to consider, but we are already supporting Teague in our budget. We're already supporting United Services, we're already supporting, you know, a lot of those, like the, the, the community kitchens and things like that. So we're already doing that and that proposal seems to kind of reflect on a lot of things that we're already currently doing.
You know, I think that. One of the problems with having a program like this is that everybody, and I mean, everybody. Comes out of the woodwork with their proposals, the people you normally do business with, the people you haven't done business with. The contractors and, you know, they're, they're looking at all these funds. That are sitting out there in all these little communities and how can they.
Right.
Participate, same thing with the administration of these programs. So I, I think we, yes, we need to prioritize. I think we need to deal with safety issues first.
Well, no, it's my, my personal opinion is safety first and we also need to make sure that when we're thinking of this. What, what are the projects that are going to serve the needs of the majority of the community, not just a smaller group too? That's the other thing.
The other thing too is that, you know, the town has evolved a certain way over. A long, long period of time and our town commons are where they are. Because of the development patterns that happen in each of these little villages around. I would kind of be opposed to doing anything to any of them because.
They're beautiful and they're historical.
And, and also it provides that green space in the middle of an area that's been built on that makes sense. It's what makes the town what it is. So if we start making changes to South Woodstock, you know, that will just creep along.
But I also feel like will it really get a lot of use because you have Roseland Park right down the street? And where would you be more comfortable, sitting where there's a lot of traffic with buses and trucks, or would you be more comfortable in a quiet park?
No, wait, wait to school get some.
Yeah.
That light is, is rough.
Right, yeah. But anyway, so if you want me to email you anything, please always contact me. And I will be more than happy to provide information. Sometimes, you know, things might change if I get different proposals, I'll keep you updated, but. We can definitely sit down again, give us more ideas off that list. You know, if, if you think there's something more important that we should include in, in round one of public safety. I will tell you, I think that we may be getting a proposal from Woodstock volunteers.
Yeah, yes.
For change out gear.
A turnout.
Turnout gear, I'm sorry, turnout gear. What we've been told is that every firefighter has to have two sets of turnout gear. Because if one is dirty and they can't wash it in time they need, they can't reuse it. And those are about two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars per set. And they have an expiration date, even if they've never been worn, you cannot wear them past the expiration date because it's a, it's a law. It's some type of.
Drives me nuts.
I know, that's the same issue we ran into with Karen was talking about the inflatable bags. That we have at Muddy Brook, but they're shared by all three, they're beyond date, so if it hit the fan tonight, we would use it. But if there was an injury, if there was a problem and they checked the date, we're liable because it'd be on date. And again, same thing, it, it's baloney, but it is what it is. It's a National Fire Protection Association.
Countries like Katie get all of our outdated stuff.
Yep.
Getting thrown away, it's going to benefit somebody.
It's going to benefit those countries that definitely could never afford to purchase.
Never gone into a fire.
Expensive.
It sounds like the material that they're making out, either they expect it to degrade or we're not going to guarantee it after.
That's.
And they have to every so often get new washers and dryers to do them themselves. One wash machine was what, twelve, twelve thousand?
Just put one in next door.
They got a grant. Yeah.
And they had to put, you know, they had to take over an area because they didn't want to destroy the footprint of the, the station. Took over an area and put in this washer and dryer, but I think it only does one set at a time. It's not like we have in our homes. With the chemicals you're exposed to in fires, a burning material.
Yeah.
And also the chemicals that are stored there, you, you gotta get it washed as soon as possible. It's not like you would wear it the next day. And that's the issue about having two sets for everybody. So.
Price of doing business.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Diane, do you have any questions is to what we've been talking about?
I would say something, but I'm being recorded so long.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. Any other questions to me regarding ARPA?
Thank you, Karen.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to go home. She's only had another, what, thirteen hour day?
Yeah, and you can tell I'm tired, I can't even speak anymore, but, okay, yeah, I'm gonna go home.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
See you tomorrow.
Maybe.
He was going to make one for each of you and I said, don't do it to them, they're nice people.
No.
So we have one. Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Are you?
And that was the budget, not.
Okay.
Well, we'll talk about that as we get into budget season because. Every year I make four of these for budget. And every year I, right after budget, all three of them go in the trash, except for the one that I keep permanently here in the town hall on site. Always have reference, so I said, you know, at this point, to save some time, because I'm working on this. I'm not going to make them folders. He doesn't want one, anytime you want a copy of something, I can email it to you or print it, but I'm not going to sit here.
Instead of having a binder for each of us, all three of us.
I'm going to give you this.
I said, don't do it.
I'm going to explain everything to you like I do with ARPA. I'll have the backup, any questions, and then you can, if you want to look at the proposals from budgets, you know, but. It's a lot of work for one person and I find that I'm getting less and less time.
Would you do me a favor and text me if you're coming in, because I've got an eight thirty meeting tomorrow morning that's on Zoom. But if I come in, because I have to look at contracts to give you an answer.
Okay, the way I'm feeling right now, because I was going to take my financial statements home and try to read them over the weekend. So I could give them to the auditor on Monday, whether it's, and, and give them the okay. I have to take them home because I can't.
Tomorrow off, I'll do Zoom.
We'll see, I might, I may or may not come in.
Okay.
Have a great, if I don't see you, have a great weekend, I may see you tomorrow, have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Okay, we jumped to number five, tax rebates. For Ulrich Klammer in the amount of twenty-one dollars, twelve cents. Do you have these on your, or no, you don't? Okay, good, I mean, whatever. Anyway, twenty-one dollars, twelve cents, the vehicle was sold June of twenty twenty. And another vehicle for eighty-six dollars and nineteen cents, it was sold in June of twenty twenty. Michael Williams Jr. in the amount of four hundred and twenty dollars, forty-two cents, it was sold in twenty twenty-one. There was a Toyota Lease Trust in the amount of fifty-three dollars, twenty-nine cents. That vehicle was sold in August of twenty twenty-one. A VW Credit Leasing Limited in the amount of forty-four dollars, eighty-nine cents. That vehicle was sold in July of twenty twenty. And fifty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents, again VW Credit Leasing. That was sold in June of twenty twenty and one more. Sold in June of twenty twenty for two hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirteen cents. So can I get agreement that we would issue rebates to these people? And I have it here. Alright, second, unanimous, thank you. Okay, one thing I do believe that you have, we agreed a couple of weeks ago, we had gone over the. Woodstock transfer station fees and brochures. And I, again, I want to point out to you or our audience that we did not go up in fees this year. The one that you have in front of you today is for Pomford. Because this colored is twenty last year, or this current year rather, the blue one is next year. And this is for twenty twenty-two. If you go through it, there's really no changes. It's pretty much identical to Woodstock's, the only difference is the fees are different for the Woodstock residents. I'm sorry, for Pomford residents, and also they are limited on the number of permits that are issued to the folks in Pomford. So if that meets with your, oh, okay, the fees are inside the front cover. Single family household, two hundred and forty dollars, and then a pass, they can purchase. If they have a yearly sticker, they can purchase a day pass. And it goes for fifty single family households in Pomford.
So. How many have been, are they all in themselves for this in the past?
I can't tell you, I don't think we've had a waiting list. I think it's been less than fifty. I know some of the people have done it, but, yeah.
We get several people, but we haven't filled them.
Is it to our advantage to promote it? Or is that's really kind of where I was going with my question?
We're gonna, well, we're gonna promote it on our website and I'll mention to Crystal and Ash. I somehow, I think it gets sent over to town clerk over in Pomford.
I'm sure, I, I mean, is it to our advantage to?
Get more people.
We're, we're doing a favor.
It's a good favor because.
No, no, I know.
Hazardous waste thing, right?
Well, we share that. This year it was there, next time we do it, it'll be here. We share between the two towns.
They have no options and a lot of your curbside haulers don't take certain things.
Yes.
So it's, it's, it's more of a helping out a neighbor.
Okay, so approved. Alright, correspondence I passed, I guess it was before the meeting. I passed out the latest map as of this afternoon. Basically. We're currently red. All the towns of Wyndham County are red. Seventy, seventy-seven percent of the people who are hospitalized are not fully vaccinated. And this data is based on the average daily rate of cases among people living in community settings per a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand population by town. You know, it's for masks, masks are recommended, but they're not. We're not forcing the issue. It's required for us here in the town hall if you haven't been vaccinated, but again, by law, we can't ask people. We have, I have people that come in all the time and wear a mask, I have other people that don't come in, so, you know, it's, it is what it is. Okay, true D month report, December third, this is for November. There were four accidents, nine investigations, two burglaries, one larceny, seventy-seven non-reportable matters. There were no DUIs, two traffic citations, two written warnings. I just wanted to thank. Under communication, I wanted to thank, we did the giving tree again. And we had a big response from people taking tags, donating, as you can see. We're sitting in the storeroom as I speak. These are going to be assembled tomorrow and are they, are they going out Monday? Okay, and it's going to be more than fifty recipients. So the people that donated and also the volunteers that are being, coming in tomorrow. The recipients are many of our elderly and also veterans, so. I also, again, the giving tree, I also want to thank last Sunday, if either of you were involved. We had to kickoff to the winter. Festival. We had a road race, this is Aaron Lucas, our rec director was very involved. Amy was very involved with the range. We had three Christmas runs based out of Roseland, we had a tree lighting ceremony. We have the annual holiday lighting that I believe is going through, we have maps out front. You can go around and see those various houses. That's going December eleventh through the eighteenth. We also have a trophy which was created last year because that was the inaugural year. And that'll be awarded to the family or group that has the, you know, the house that gets the most votes.
How does the voting work?
The what?
How does the voting work?
You. Yeah, online?
Through the town website.
I think it's. From the rec or from just the town website?
From the recreation page of the town website.
Okay, alright. Okay, and you'll be happy to know that it's open to the public as opposed to the Board of Selectmen. And you'll be happy to know that it's open to the public as opposed to the Board of Selectmen. But you're welcome to take part.
Well, I've actually seen half of them.
Okay.
I'm trying to get to the other half.
Okay.
All my cookies, and, but I think it's nice to have it open to the public.
Oh yeah, absolutely, and it encourages people. In fact, a friend of mine posted something on Facebook today. He was picking up his 98-year-old mother and from a nursing home and wanted to take her out tonight to see lights. So he was asking for, he got a big response of places to go, so good for him.
And there are places in town that aren't even on the map.
Oh yeah.
I mean, Shepherd's Landing off, the exit road.
It always was like that.
It always has.
Yeah, they also, it was a great place to go to take your kids to trick or treat.
Oh yeah, yeah.
We used to do that.
You can see that place from the space shuttle.
The whole, everybody's house, even the median in that center of the drive is decorated this way.
Neat. Diane, any public comments, questions, anything? You know, that's very much like me. I go to Zoom meetings and you'll say, oh, Jay Swan's there. Will you see Jay Swan? Well, no, no, I mean, I'll, I'll do it from here. And occasionally I walk in and somebody will say, you can shut off your computer, the meetings are over. Thank you, Crystal, and I go and I shut off the computer because I'll be around doing various things. Okay, I would entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
Can I just make one quick comment?
Sure.
All right. I don't know if this is at all usual, but I'm going to throw it out there just for the heck of it. I have some experiences and some background that may or may not be useful and I just wanted to offer help if you ever need help.
Can you type?
I can, I can, but I, I'm saying if there are, are, you know, a little projects or things that you need drafted or, I don't know what in particular, but I just want you to know that I truly want to be helpful and not just somebody who shows up and insensitizes.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
No, seriously, I appreciate that.
I wish I had enough time to offer.
Yeah, it just-
That's okay, my circumstances aren't great, that's all.
No, your circumstances have changed.
Yes, well, I mean-
As opposed to previously.
Yes.
Yes. He's still in that previous life.
I know, he's just that young, young kid.
I know. All right. I, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
Third. Thank you, Diane, always a pleasure, take care. And we missed-